All right, we're ready whenever you guys are all ready. The April 24th, 2024, regular meeting of the Quarter Selectment will come to order. Please join us in the lodge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, guys. So I think most of you are here. It's exciting, we usually have many people for the Cemetery Commission interviews. And so we'll just go in order. I did want to note that Ben Moore withdrew.
Ben Bodlin.
Ben Bodlin, yeah. Ben Bodlin withdrew. And that just came through. But we do still have a number of great applicants, so thank you all very much. So we'll start with Suzanne, if that's fine. And so if you want to come here, just because we are recording these now, thank you. We've got CCTV. We'll sit there. And spoiler alert for everyone else, you'll get the same exact questions. But no pressure, but you know who you're talking about. So this was partially your idea. So Ben, do you want to ask a question? All right, do you want to ask that question?
Sure.
We would like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, a commission, or in another volunteer capacity. And in responding, please expand on what roles you played and what impact you had.
I am presently on the Cemetery Committee for Historic Stonington. And we have been working for the past year getting, maintaining, documenting, trying to preserve the cemeteries that we have here in Stonington. I have also sat on boards with the Republic Neighborhood Center in the Stonington Como a few years ago. Quite a few years ago, my kids were young, and I did youth programs when I was there. I'm a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and we do things of Stonington. So those are some of the things I've done. My impact is, I don't know, very much interested in preserving, especially veterans, monuments, revolutionaries. I've given speeches on local patriot and the Abcott Cemetery. And that's kind of what made me become interested in finding, helping preserve cemeteries.
Thank you.
I haven't got a question. I can do it. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Cemetery Commission?
Well, basically, what the committee has been doing this past year is maintaining, documenting, and preserving the cemeteries that, some of them are abandoned, that we've thrown in the woods, recovered over, and we've wanted to clean them out. And we've had a lot of help, volunteers, and putting some of those stones back together and unearthing them. So hopefully, we can keep doing that.
Great, thank you. And then lastly, if you just wanted to add in any professional experience that you think is relevant or a specific skill set that you think you bring to the commission?
Well, I enjoyed showing people how to clean stones off, which is pretty easy. It's water and a plastic scraper. And you spray it down a lot and wipe and clean it. And it's amazing what happens, how you can read those stones once you've done a simple thing like that, just water. Other than that, we use D-2. And just doing the history, like you said, I would continue to do that, documenting the patriots that we have in these things, especially maybe bring them to the schools and be able to give that knowledge of people that came before us here.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Any other questions for Suzanne?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we won't hold it against you guys if you leave on your own. We won't make any decisions tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is Goyoung Fai. Thank you.
We'd like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity. In responding, please expand on what roles you played and what impact you had.
Well, I can't say I've been on the town board because I'm 19, but I will say,
That would be a first.
I will say I've served on boards for a while, just in terms of, like, last year I was class president, I was served on student government, I've served in those larger bodies my whole life, really since middle school. But, and then I currently also serve at Southern in the Honors College Outreach Board, which is, it's like a planning board. It also does outreach to the students, and we plan events for people. So, you know, I've worked in that capacity, boards. And then I'd say, in terms of experience with this sort of thing, I did take Mr. Mastiff's class at the high school, which dealt with conservation and preservation, specifically also dealing with cemeteries. And we helped clean out the Abcott Robinson yard between the high school and Davis Standard, and that was really one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. And, you know, I've done a lot of cleanups and stuff, just around. And I work for the Historical Society.
Okay. What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Cemetery Commission?
Well, I definitely think it's really important that we not only preserve, but we kind of take back a lot of the history that has been sort of overgrown. And I feel like that for a while, you know, there is a lot of cemeteries, so I feel like a lot of them were kind of left to ruin. And I feel like it's important that we not only keep the upkeep of the ones that are in good condition now, but bring back some of the ones that aren't in good condition, as well as just making it more cohesive around town, you know, being able to really look into those cemeteries. And I also just think it's up to every generation to keep going with the upkeep of these cemeteries, because that's the only way, you know, one generation forgets and then it's lost to the ground. And so as like a younger person in the community, I just wanted to do my part to bridge to my generation the importance of keeping up these cemeteries.
Great, thank you. And then lastly, just if you want to add in any other kind of relevant experience or skill set that you bring?
I'd just say, you know, I'm obsessed with Stonington history. I've been going to the Historical Society since I was tiny. I have family in a lot of these cemeteries, so, you know, it's like, you know, I've been going there my whole life as well. And I just am fairly passionate about preservation. And I'm taking some classes now at college that I think have a lot of cool new ideas about preservation and how to do that. So this would be a good place to apply.
Do you guys have any questions?
Thanks so much for all that you've already.
Do you have any questions, Rob?
No.
All right, thank you for being here.
Of course. Pleasure.
June?
Sure.
Same question, just from a different person. So we would like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity. And in responding, please expand on what roles you've played and what impact you had.
Okay, well, some of my volunteer work may not have been here in Stonic, all of Stonington, but I'm a life member of Mystic River Ambulance, current EMT, served as secretary of that organization for many years. I'm also an EMT and firefighter elsewhere. But beyond that, I wish I had served on a commission in Stonington prior, you know, to considering this one. So I'm a little embarrassed to say I have not served on a commission in Stonington. But going back to my professional career as a teacher, I was membership chair for the Teachers Union where I taught. I feel like I've been secretary of everything for a long time, so, yeah.
Sure. Excuse me. What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Cemetery Commission?
The primary function of this particular commission, which I'm so glad has been established, certainly as we all would agree, is to oversee the condition of the cemeteries, to make sure that they are respected, and to stay on top of state statutes regarding cemeteries, and to know what our responsibilities relative to those might be.
Thank you. And then lastly, if you just want to add in any other relevant professional experience or specific skill set?
Well, I'm proud to say that I've been a member of the Historic Stonington Cemetery Committee since last May, May of 2023. I think I've been pretty enthusiastic about it, and I'm willing to trump anywhere and everywhere to locate cemeteries, and I've actually done quite a bit of that, so, yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for June?
No.
Any questions, Rob?
No.
Well, thank you very much.
Please call me Kathy.
Oh, Kathy, all right.
My father always told me to use my formal name when I was doing anything.
Well, thank you very much. Do you want to do the first?
Sure. We'd like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity. And in responding, please expand on what roles you played and what impact you had.
Okay, well, I've only lived in Stonington for three years. My husband, we moved here, my husband was, we're part of the Vargas compound, if you know Vargas Corners. And after his mother passed away, we ended up buying our house and redoing, so we've only been in Stonington. My husband was raised here. But when we lived in Rocky Hill, I was on the Board of Education for 10 years, served on every committee possible, depending whether my party was in power or not, if that's the right word. Then I was on the Town Council for eight years, also sort of being Chair of Finance, all kinds of committees. So I am in complete understanding of time commitments and missing family things to, you know, do that. So I understand that completely. In addition to that, I've been extremely involved. I still belong to our church in Hartford, Wall Saints Orthodox Church. And I've been president for, I don't know, a long time. I'm currently president, running all kinds of events. So I am very capable of multitasking and whatever. I mean, I'm interested in doing this is because I'm trying to find a niche to get to know more people in town. My husband's pretty friendly with people in town, but I'm not, so I'm trying to find something. I'm kind of semi-retired, so I would like to be involved. Been a member of the Historic Preservation for a while, from afar, if you belonged, when we lived in Rocky Hill. We go to events, but I haven't really jumped into getting anything yet, and that's why I thought this would be a nice fit for me.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, go next. What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Cemetery Commission?
Well, it's a new commission. I was reading a little bit about that. And actually, it was at the function that they had at the Historic Preservation in the fall, in the winter, for the wreaths. I was talking to a woman there, Michelle, and she was sharing about all the cemeteries in Stonington, and I really was not aware of that. I mean, I know my husband's at Vargas, Sylvia, Vargas Family, said donated St. Mary's, and we're constantly walking through that cemetery. And I've seen other ones, but I was not aware of the number of cemeteries in town. And also, it's just very interesting. I mean, growing up, my mother took upon herself that at Christmas time, went to all her family's graves and put Christmas decorations, you know, blankets. And when my mother started getting sick quite a few years ago, my husband and I decided to help her do that. So now, after she's passed away, for 10 years, we go to the cemetery, and there's nine different graves we visit, and we do that, and then on my father's side of the family. So it's, in doing that, I have an appreciation for cemeteries and people that are in cemeteries. And I feel bad for people that don't go to visit people that are there. And when you go by and see a stone that's completely dilapidated, that was somebody's relative, and I don't know, at my stage of life, I really appreciate that. And I would really like to see, I mean, I'm assuming this commission would be overseeing, recording that, you know, just actually kind of touching that person from afar type of thing. And that means a lot to me at this point in my life, so that's why I'm interested in this.
Do you want to add in any other relevant professional experience or specific skill set?
I'm of a financial background, so I am very organized person. I believe in Excel spreadsheets and being very, you know, very organized. So if that were part of what we're doing is here, is recording things, that's a skill set I have in recording and keeping track of things. I like being outside. I'm not sure if I'm trumping around as much as that, but as June said, I've got hiking boots, and I'm ready to get out there and do that. But I also want to learn more about the history of Stonington, and I think this is a good way to do it. And it's also recognizing those are people that have come for us, so that's why I'm there.
Do you guys have any questions for Kathy?
No.
Any questions, Rob?
Thanks for your answer.
Yeah, thank you, welcome. Alan? Thank you.
Sure. I should know this by heart, but it's literally the same question.
So we would like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, a commission, or in another volunteer capacity. And in responding, please expand on what role you played and what impact you had.
So I've served as the moderator at Mystic Congregational Church for three years. I'm the current Rhode Island State President for the Sons of the American Revolution. I'm a past camp commander for the Sons of Union Veterans. And our particular camp flags over 1,000 veterans every year in four different cemeteries in Rhode Island. Since 2017, I've also been personally flagging all of the veterans in Pocketuck. There's, I think, 19 in the six cemeteries within the boundaries of Pocketuck that I've been taking care of.
What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Cemetery Commission?
I think number one is preservation, because a lot of these cemeteries are deteriorating. I think it's just to keep them from getting worse than they already are, restoring where possible, while kind of respecting the historic character of some of those old cemeteries. And last would be education. I think letting people know what's out there and the history behind it, because it's more than just names and dates. You know, there are people behind those markers.
And if you just wanted to add in any other relevant professional experience or skill set that you think would be helpful for the commission?
I'm a professional genealogist, so I have the research side of things. I was able to use that a few years ago to cut through the red tape of the Veterans Administration and get a VA marker for a Revolutionary War veteran whose stone had shattered and was unreadable. So it took a lot between researching his background and history, and then, because it was a family marker, the VA required me to get permission from a living descendant. So I had to find a living descendant of that Revolutionary War veteran and get her to sign a letter giving us permission to remove the old marker and replace it with the VA marker.
Do you guys have any questions for Alan?
No.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Thank you very much.
And I'm going to take you up on your offer to leave because I'm supposed to be in Providence at 7:00.
Oh, drive carefully.
Thank you.
Rebecca? Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, we're really mixed up. Through you perfectly. So could you tell us any, oh, yeah, we could do that. I could get really crazy up here. Could you tell us any pertinent experience serving on a board or any other volunteer capacity? And when you respond, could you expand on the role you've played and the impact you think you had?
Sure. So I have been on the Board of Trustees for the Denison Pequot Sebo's Nature Center since 2019. I have served mostly in that capacity, helping them with grants and greenway, looking at connecting greenways and public spaces for permanent protection. I also sat on the Rhode Island ASLA, that's the Association of Landscape Architects, for about five years. In that capacity, I was their communications director, mostly doing social media and, again, documenting outreach. And then I am an advisor currently, and this is not volunteer, but sometimes I think adjunct faculty. A lot of the work we do is volunteer. So I am working with students in the Landscape Architecture Department at the University of Rhode Island currently, helping them get ready to go out in the working world.
Sure. What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Cemetery Commission?
Yeah, so I think one of the most important things for me is documentation of the cemeteries. I think there is a duty, because these are public spaces, that people know about them and know where they are. I think that a lot of times, they are not, you know, obviously maintained, so I think maintenance is another piece of that. And by maintenance, I think there's both the, you know, vegetation maintenance, there's the maintenance of the stones themselves and any of the features that are in there, and then the preservation of, you know, the history that involves many people from the town and nearby. So in that, you know, with that said, I think the access piece for me is really important because, you know, even in talking about the Cemetery Committee, not a lot of people know where they are. I do have one in my backyard. But I think, you know, prior to that, it is something that I'm interested in because it's town-owned property, public space.
Thank you. I know you talked a little bit about this, but can you describe your relevant professional experience as well as any specific skill set you would bring to the commission?
Sure. So I am a landscape architect licensed in Connecticut, Rhode Island, New York. I previously, I am certified as an invasive species manager in Rhode Island, so that's something that I think may become relevant. And as with my work with the DPNC, I am skilled at GIS and mapping. So a lot of the work that I do for them is gathering public information and trying to make it more presentable to the general public by way of presentation, communication, public outreach.
Any questions for Rebecca?
No.
Do you have any questions for her? All right, thank you. Thank you. And next up is Liz, what?
Hello.
Hello. Thank you.
Of course.
Oh, sure. We'd like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity. In responding, please expand on what role you played and what impact you had.
So currently, I serve on the Board of the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition. In that capacity, I don't have an officer's role, but I did help hire their newest director. I took the lead in that effort. I also serve on the Towns Commission for the Cultural Districts, which were recently approved already, so. And I am the executive director of Historic Stonington as well. Past volunteer experiences include the Regional Multicultural Magnet School, where I served on the site-based management team. I helped in hiring and then managing some classroom volunteers as well. And for the Stonington Garden Club, I think I've held almost every position, including officers, except for treasurer. So I have chaired their triannual garden tour, which manages a team of, an army of volunteers, really. In that effort, I have led the effort to restore the children's gardens in the past at the Stonington Como and other things too, so. Yep.
What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Cemetery Commission?
The primary function, in my opinion, is preservation. These are sites that have information that's not available anywhere else. They are primary sources for people's lives, they're tools for education. I think one of the other missions of this commission would be advocacy for these sites, which we've been doing for the past year with the Historic Stonington Committee, but advocating for volunteers, for priorities, for funding as well. Communication, public engagement, access, because these are public sites, and people should be able to visit them. They are open space in the town of Stonington. So there are many, many things that this commission would be charged with, so.
Excellent.
If you want to add in any more detail around your professional experience or your specific skill set that you would bring to the commission?
So as Executive Director of Historic Stonington, I'm a historian by training. I have access to historical resources in our library and archives and things we don't have, I know where to find them. I am skilled at managing volunteers as well as staff. I have a passionate interest in this. I'm here, not in my role as Executive Director, but personal, as a resident of the town of Stonington. Cemetery is where I was first introduced to history, where I first realized that there were people that lived before me and led lives and died, so it's important.
Do you guys have any questions for Liz?
No.
Any questions for her?
No.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Last and surly not least. Colonel Rob Simmons to the podium.
Well, I'm glad I heard all the questions, so I can prepare my answers.
Anyone can repeat the question.
We came up with different ones for you. Ben, do you want to go first?
Sure. We'd like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity. In responding, please expand on what roles you played and what impact you had.
Yes, I, first of all, I have a longstanding interest in cemeteries and in history. I currently serve on the Advisory Committee of the Stonington Cemetery Association, so since the mission of this commission is to advise the First Selectmen, I think that's a very important part of the overall role of the commission. I've also served as a member of the Stonington Cemetery Association on two different occasions, separated by about 15 years, and I've served as a member and vice chairman of the Stonington Historical Society, or Historic Stonington as it's now called. And I think collaboration with Historic Stonington and this commission is vitally important. I've served for six years on the Board of Selectmen, four years as First Selectmen, and working with the Department of Public Works, I came to realize that over 30 cemeteries in the town of Stonington are actually maintained, to a certain extent, by the town. We have two ecclesiastical cemeteries, and we have two cemeteries that are run by associations, and so they have their own method of funding. But at least 30 are funded by the town, and there may be more out there that we just don't know about. And I think that's a very important responsibility. As a military officer, the last ceremony of a veteran is his or her burial. That's the last ceremony. And to think that we have veterans buried here in this town from the Revolutionary War, the War of 1812, Civil War, World War I, II, and so on and so forth, to include a Medal of Honor winner. Honoring those people is important. Honoring all those who have lived in this community and who are buried here is important. Honoring those who may be buried in a small family farm plot that we don't even know about, that the Stonington Historical Society can help us find and locate, and perhaps work with a landowner who now owns the property and may not even know that they have a cemetery on their property. Now, these are important things to do. And I think it's an important responsibility for the First Selectmen and for the Board to address this issue, not just because it's the moral thing to do, but if you read the state statutes... state statutes, a lot of this is the law.
And you talked a little bit about this, obviously, in your last answer, but what's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the commission?
Well, it's all laid out, and I think it's important to read the documentation that was used to establish the commission. And the ordinance states that the commission will serve as an advisory body to the First Selectmen. As a center of communication with the objective insurance, Stonington cemeteries are respectfully cared for. I think it's fair to say some are not. Maintained and documented, and I think it's fair to say some are not. So I think that's something important that we have to do. I think it's also important to note that there is exclusionary language for cemeteries owned by cemetery associations or ecclesiastical societies. So it's important to realize that we have two ecclesiastical and two associated cemeteries, which I'm sure are happy to collaborate, but they do not fall under the scope of the I was always told that when you have a job, or when you get a job, you should read the language that establishes the position so you don't wander off having a good time but doing things that you probably shouldn't be doing.
Do you want to add in any specific skill sets that you feel like you would bring to the commission or any other professional experience?
The first official job I had in the town of Stonington was serving on Board of Police Commissioners. Used to be across the street. I was chairman for a couple of years. And the last job I had was on the Board of Selectmen. And I think that's kind of a bookmark for me. I've served on the COMO, I've served on the Historical Society, I've served on the Cemetery Association, and so on and so forth. But I think working with the police commission and the police department and working with the Board of Selectmen probably brought me in contact with just about every issue you could find in town, whether I wanted it or not.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for her?
Yes. I noticed that the appointments are for one, two, and three years until a certain period of time passes, at which point it's for three years. I would be happy to serve for a year. I can't promise much beyond that, but I'm hopeful, God willing. I'm also a veteran, and I've been involved with the wreath laying at the cemeteries. I've been involved with the flag placement at the cemeteries. And one of the jobs I had with the American Legion was to be liaison with Stonington Cemetery Association, especially when it was decided that flags would be removed from veterans' graves unilaterally and without collaboration with the Legion, which I objected to. And I reminded them that under state statutes, section 198297, no bylawless can require or result in the removal or banishing of any undamaged United States flag or Armed Forces Service marker provided by veterans' organizations. And after some discussion, we convinced the Stonington Cemetery Association that that was the law. I wonder how many graves we have out there for veterans that are not marked or flagged? I don't know. But I think it would be interesting to look into that and find out and see what can be done about it.
Thank you. And thank you for the work that many of you have already done in the past year, because you've already gotten us to a much better place than we were a year ago. So thank you. And thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, so the Cemetery Commission interviews are done. Again, you guys are very welcome to stay in here. There are all the fascinating things we're going to talk about, but we won't hold it against you if we leave. With that, we'll ask if there's any comments from the public. Thank you. We'll go through some of our housekeeping items.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you all.
Could I get a motion to approve the regular review minutes of the Board of Ten?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Hi, thank you. And Ben, I said this wrong at the beginning, while we just got an email that Ben Baldwin removed his application. It didn't come in time to come on this agenda, so it was Beth Moore that has withdrawn her application from the Cemetery Commission. So we have two. We'll note the other one at the next meeting. But again, we obviously just heard we still have some wonderful candidates. So now, under appointments for the Economic Development Commission, could I get a motion to appoint Aidan Adams as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission?
Salute.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, I spoke to Aidan yesterday and was very impressed.
Okay. Yes. I was very impressed by his background and resume, and I think he can offer, especially, you know, communication between the two towns, hopefully.
Yeah. No, it was wonderful. And yeah. Further help connect Westerly and Stonington.
And his economic background too.
Right, very, yeah. And professional. So that's great. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And thank you to Aidan. Ben, yay, look at him, like.
You went out of order.
One month, what?
You went out of order.
Yeah. All right. I have next to architectural designer before.
It's okay.
Could I get a motion to appoint Andrea Borella to the Architectural Designer Review Board?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
I have to say, I'm very excited since this was brought up, you know, probably just about a month ago. We've now gotten two great applicants that are really missing, backgrounds we're missing from this board. So I think they should be very happy.
Agreed.
Oh, sorry.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So under seat, and I'm happy to talk more about this, I'm very excited, could I get a motion to appoint Michael Sheffers, who's a borough warden, to replace me for the Stonington representative to the seat board?
Salute.
Your second.
Okay.
Any discussion? I thought it was nice. I've been on the board for like five years. Michael has an interest, we can only have one representative, and so we talked about how to try and divide and conquer a bit more. I'm on a few other subcommittees. One month. So he'll connect with us after each meeting, as well as with Leanne, as relevant. They meet right after our Council of Government meetings down in Morewich. So they still give an update in the afterwards, and they have, like, a very detailed, kind of hour-plus, usually long meeting, and it's Waterford, New London, Stonington, that are probably the most heavily discussed. And so I think Michael will be great, and it'll be great to get a new perspective in there.
If you're stepping up.
No, that's great.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you to Michael. Could I get a motion to reappoint Lee Richard, I think his name's sounding wrong, obviously, as a regular member, and then Jules Granger as an alternate member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Watercourses Commission?
Salute.
Your second.
Those are both reappointments?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I'm glad to hear that they're both willing to stand there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then for Stonington Harbor Management, a motion to reappoint Tori Gimble to the Stonington Harbor Management Commission?
Salute.
Okay.
Any discussion?
No.
Another very enthusiastic.
She does a lot of work.
Yeah. It's great that she's willing to stand there. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Nothing under old or new? I do have a few comments, but I can wait until the end. So Ben, do you want to start with any comments?
Not too much. Just, again, Conservation Commission, I went to the meeting this week, and I just reiterate that I think they really need some staff support, and they seem to, they brought it up amongst themselves without me prompting them, that they would like more support. And also brought up the idea of perhaps access to some of the funding for, will be a lot of, hopefully, for the POCD to be a portion for the open space program.
And did they mention, Clifton and I met with two members to talk with them about the.
Yeah, Frank mentioned that.
Oh, yeah. And so it was helpful. And I think, again, hopefully now that planning zoning is finally fully staffed, and it's a hope next year we'll hopefully have another addition there. But I think Clifton will be able to spend a little bit more time.
Yeah, because I mean, they had a very simple application for planning zone for a text amendment, you know, basically just grammatical corrections. And they figured it out, but they didn't really have any guidance from home, what Mr. Evans about.
Yeah.
It just seems like they could use some guidance.
No, again, I think not us. They've been beyond underwater with just too much work and not enough staff. But now that we're, you know, obviously newer people versus people who've been there for a long time, it still takes some time. But I think we're getting close to the point where Clifton can start coming to some of those meetings. And then we did also talk about, while we didn't get the money we hoped to the extent we wanted for the budget for the POCD update, we do still want to be sure some of that money is dedicated for open space plan update. And we also talked about trying to figure out funding to add the GIS layer, some of those conversations have started.
Yeah.
But it all takes some.
Also, one other thing, for the Conservation Commission, the waterfront commission and is involved in, as you know, researching public waterfront access and trying to, you know, find out which are still active and which may have been forgotten, et cetera, et cetera. The Conservation Commission seems also to be interested in pursuing that. I think it'd be great if there was some way that they could work together to really, something that's very important to me, and I just look up to see success there, and perhaps the two commissions could.
They could have a joint. They could have a joint subcommittee and.
Yeah. And I know Stephanie Wu is on both, so maybe she'd be the place to start.
All right. All right, we can all put some ideas on that. No, that could be really good. All right, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
I just have a couple of quick things. At the Flood Origin Control Commission meeting last week, they made a couple moving forward decisions, and one of them is they have scheduled a meeting now to meet with Molly at Town Hall during work hours, and I know Stacy's going to help them make sure that's published. But they're starting to work on the priorities that we had discussed, and they're interested in finding out, you know, more about the grant process, and if they should be looking at certain things and what Molly needs in terms of, as they work on their priorities. So that is a good thing. And they also mentioned, again, the GIS, you know, open space and conservation easement issues. So they're very interested in that as well. They're also looking for an update on the floodgate, but I said, you know, we need to wait to see. If the budget passes, then they're responding and they can get an update on that, because their annual report will include that area. I attended a webinar, I was at Candy, on the white-carrying boundaries, to, you know, find out a little bit more of the current thinking and some of the other state rates, which was interesting. And then I attended the, you did the Mr. Griffin, the Boathouse kickoff meeting with Downs, the new construction manager. So I'm really excited to see that get going, you know, that they're ready to really hit the ground running and start going through plans and seeing what they can do with an estimate to kind of help come up with a timeline. That was a very promising meeting. I think that's it.
And we were here for a while with the interviews, so I'll be brief. One thing I wanted to update you guys about, because it'll be likely, hopefully, on our next meeting agenda, is we have what I think could be a really amazing opportunity to apply for a state grant for the CDBG Small Cities Program to expand our existing housing loan program for low-income, for income-restricted individuals in town. As you guys might remember, we've gotten $150,000 to kind of pilot seed fund this through ARCA money. We have completed two homes, we have a third one in the works, and we do have a waiting list, and we almost ran through all the money. So we're really excited that this opportunity hasn't come up in a while, has come up. We can apply for $400,000. It's very competitive, so we'll see how we do. But basically, we're putting out, we have an RFP out right now for a consultant to write the grant for us, because you have to be certified, and it's a pretty extensive grant application, not something that Molly can do legally, she's not allowed to, but we are talking about getting her certified for future years, so she could do that going forward. And then once we award that, then we'll have to have a public hearing on the application, and then pending that, we can actually apply. But I think it's just, it's a wonderful program. It would be amazing. I don't know a lot of times Stonington's ever, I think it's been decades since we've gotten this type of CD, we've gotten CDBG money for homeless intervention. That's been a pass-through grant, but for us to do our own project like this would be really fantastic. We've had good meetings with our Director of Finance, Human Services team, everybody's on board and excited to do this. So we'll see what happens, if we can get it all pulled together, because it has to be done by the end of May. So it's a tight timeline.
And the public hearing on that, maybe on the 22nd?
May 22nd, yep. So that's kind of when we'd have to, because I think it's very specific. And they're talking to legal ads in the paper, and so we're trying, Stacy's trying to work through all the extensive timelines. But it seems cautiously optimistic. I think that is just, the program already has been amazing, and we hope, so far it's often, just happened to be seniors, but one woman was about to be evicted, nobody wanted to, but it was a safety issue. And now she's in her home, she's able to rent out the other two floors of her home, so she has sustainable income coming in. She's a widow. And then the other two are an elderly couple whose roof was leaking, and we were able to catch it before mold started coming in. And again, if these people had to leave, it's really, as we know, nowhere really in town to go. So hopefully, we'll be able to expand that program. So we'll see what happens with that, because it was really positive. Then I'd also just add, obviously, the budget, for anyone listening, the vote is next Tuesday. We'll have a referendum, and just, you know, on the town website, you can read a lot more information. And there are absentee ballots. There are absentee ballots at Town Hall. And if anybody has questions, they're still welcome to call, reach out, we can have, you know, happy to talk more or connect you at the right department if you have specific questions on anything. And.
The work we're doing at Town Hall.
Oh, yeah. So Town Hall is going to be closed Friday at noon, so will Human Services. We're hopefully in the very final stage of our.
Not Human Services.
Oh, not, oh, yeah, they're able to stay open now. It's been up and down. They're all going to be open, but yeah, DPW, you won't be able to call afternoon, you will get a busy signal. But they will be all working, it's just Town Hall that has to close, but it's the final stage of our HVAC work, and we're working with every source, we have to cut off all the power and then transition everything over, and they will be working there all weekend. We've connected with all the abutting neighbors to let them know, because the generator also will be running, because all the fire radio system equipment runs from the Town Hall, so it needs to keep running all weekend. So, but so far, I think communication's been good, it's all up and out. But if anybody had any plans to call or come and do anything, try and, you know, reach out before noon on Friday. And.
I have a stupid question. Stupid question on the CDBG grant. The public hearing, is that prior to or after the order?
Prior to. So to, in order to apply, you have to do the public hearing, and assuming that, again, if a lot of people cannot, so we don't support this, we don't want you to, so we're going to apply for the grant.
I just had a quick other thing, and we briefly talked about this, trying to come up with a communication to help better educate people on the different processes in the town meetings. We had a lot recently, especially at the town meeting on Monday, a lot of questions, and people just didn't understand the process and where they can get involved, and, you know, there were people who were looking for changes to happen on Monday, and it's, you know, it's too late, now we're going to vote on it. But somebody had recommended some kind of a little cheat sheet or guide or something like that. So it's something we can kind of think of. And, you know, we can start with kind of like the town meetings, but maybe it could even be expanded to explain to people what happens at the different commission meetings, because there are a lot of questions there. What does this commission do? If I go to a meeting, what happens there?
Maybe what we could do is, years ago, like. Maybe what we could do is, years ago, like when we first took office, we updated our kind of Board and Commission Guide and the information packet, and did a whole outline of like what each commission does and everything, and then, but, so we could share that with you guys, and if you have feedback on it. But maybe we could send another survey out. We had done a survey a while back on like, are you aware of these communication channels? And, you know, do you have feedback on these, and what would you like to see? So maybe we could do another one, because I think, one, a lot of people aren't aware of the communication that does exist, but then, two, they might have better and new ideas. On the budget side, I'd say, you know, every year, I think it keeps getting better, which is good, but also it shows every year there's room for improvement. So new ideas come up, so people are listening, or have ideas on how we can improve more, definitely share them, because sometimes it's simple things, but, you know, we've tried to do, yeah, for each budget meeting, you know, what the theme is and who can engage and who can't, and kind of an overview, but I'm sure there's more we could do. And then one thing is that we have been working on, I think we can share it, we're excited, we're going to be launching, it started with Emergency Management Services, Up and Schneider identified it, but now we've expanded it, and it'll be an app for the town, people can download on their phones, and information can come directly to you, and we're getting different departments to sign up. And so while, yes, it'll have emergency management, it'll also have, you know, you can sign up and the transfer station is going to be closed, or the trash pickup hours are going to be changed because of the holiday. You can actually get like a live tier photo date, which I think is the number one thing most people will care about. But then we'll also pepper in things about, you know, the budget meeting coming up and everything. The town of Westerly has a, North Stonington has one that's, I think, pretty well responded to. So that'll start, you know, town clerk, time to get your fishing license, dog license, things like that, but road closures, things like that, we think will hopefully be useful for people. So that'll be one thing, and then at least we can say to people, you know, but then I think there's that next level of understanding how to engage with your local government that is...
I think, yeah, I think it's improved so much, though, that, I mean, that's your point, but I think that, I just think it's improved a lot.
Oh, it's absolutely.
Social media has helped. But also, I was going to suggest, I don't know, John's here, but maybe a job for the EDC to put together some of the public houses, you know, all the boards and commissions and their functions and...
But we do have that. But we did update it. Patty and I worked on it. But maybe they could, we have like a very, yeah, we have like a good one listed, but maybe they can make it like glossier.
Exciting.
But yeah, I think we could, we could definitely reach out to them about, and also to help with maybe a survey, to be sure if they're aware of what we do have.
I mean, just the calendar, the town, I mean, just, a lot of information, people just know about that, that's all they need to know.
Yeah, if you want to know about the town news, yeah, that would be helpful. So if you're not signed up to get town news, you should do it. But, okay, so maybe we'll, I feel like there are other things I want to share, but I'm blanking. All right, so hopefully, in our next main meeting, we'll have some really exciting, more updates to share, and we'll see how the budget vote goes. It's going out? All right, thank you.